Hello. I'm Lesley Cullum, Voter Service Chair of the League of Women Voters of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. And on behalf of the League, I am pleased to welcome you to this candidate forum sponsored by the League in partnership with Rutherford County TV. The League believes that candidate forums provide an excellent format for voters to become more familiar with the candidates and their positions. We appreciate the support from Rutherford County Government provided by Brian Robertson, CIO at the Office of Information Technology, and Lee Harris at RCTV. They and their staff enable broadcasting and streaming of our forums to reach a large number of voters. The League seeks to conduct our forums in a nonpartisan manner. Key participants, especially the moderator, are not publicly aligned with any candidate. In the upcoming Rutherford County general election, you will be voting for important positions in county government such as county mayor, county sheriff, county school board, and county commissioners. Early voting starts July 13th and runs through July 28th. In a process that's new this year and implemented by the Rutherford County Election Commission to increase voter convenience, on election day itself, that's August 2nd, you'll be able to vote at any one of the voting centers located throughout Rutherford County. To learn which voting location will be best for you on election day, visit the Rutherford County Election Commission at www.ruco.vote. We thank you for your attention as you hear these candidates introduce themselves and answer questions about pertinent issues facing our county. We hope you find this forum useful in deciding the candidates you choose to support. Remember, your vote gives you a prime opportunity to influence how government is conducted in Rutherford County. Please make your decision known by voting. Thank you for joining us, and remember, your vote counts.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Pruitt, and I will serve as moderator for this candidate forum. This forum is cosponsored by the League of Women Voters of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County and the Rutherford County Office of Information Technology. The League believes that candidate forums provide an excellent way for voters to become more familiar with candidates and their positions. It is my pleasure to welcome both our audience here at the county courthouse and our viewers at home. This evening, we will be hearing remarks from the candidates for Rutherford County School Board Zones 1 and 4. Before introducing the candidates, let me outline the procedure for the forum. Each candidate will have a two-minute opening statement. When all candidates have completed the opening statement, I will ask several more questions. Candidates will give one-minute responses to each question. The candidates will be allowed two minutes to answer the last question and make their closing remarks. I want to thank the candidates for graciously accepting the invitation to participate in this forum. Let's meet our candidates. Remember, you have two minutes for your opening statement. Speaking first is Tammy Sharp from Zone 1.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Tammy Sharp, and I live in the Laverne area and have a 17-year-old son. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. I don't know about the other candidates, but we kind of get left out. We're probably the most important of all the candidates because our schools affect everything in the area. They affect the education, they affect crime, they affect how we govern. And thank you so much for putting on this event because with some of the other races going on, I think that we're left out. I've been following education since my son was probably in about the third or fourth grade in Rutherford County. And unbeknown to us, he had a learning disability, but we struggled, and that has given me certainly a different perspective than maybe some of the other parents because we all know that learning is not a cookie cutter, one-size-fits-all. So I'm excited about this, to get some new people on the board. And Rutherford County is a great area, it's a growing area. We have our challenges, but we're starting off from a great place.
Our next speaker is Dow Smith, also from Zone 1.
Thank you, Dr. Pruitt. And thank you, League, for providing this forum. And thanks, Brian Robertson, for what you do. My name is Dow Smith. I'm married to Cindy Smith. This year, we'll celebrate our 29th year of marriage. We're the proud parents of two awesome young men. And as grateful parents with so many wonderful teachers and administrators in our Rutherford County system that educated them so well, we're eternally grateful. We want to make sure that parents coming up behind us will have a great system to educate their children. My vocation, I'm a design builder. I'm the president and founder of Dow Smith Contracting Company. This year, we celebrated 25 years of being in business. We design and build churches, healthcare facilities, and commercial buildings. As a business owner, I have a strong desire and need to see economic development continue. The best tool to attract and retain jobs in our community is a strong public education system. So the reasons why I want to serve North Rutherford County as your school board rep is because I'm a grateful parent and a business owner that recognizes the importance of a strong public education system.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Michael Beldon from Zone 4.
Thank you. Appreciate this opportunity. My name is Mike Beldon. My wife Claudia and I have lived in the Smyrna area for 12 years now. I moved here to Tennessee about 30 years ago and have been in and out of the area with various job assignments. My experience has been primarily in engineering, facility engineering, construction management, and facility management. We got acquainted with the school board about six years ago when the neighborhood that we live in had some issues that needed resolution. So we got acquainted with our school board rep, we got acquainted with the entire board, as a matter of fact, and enjoyed quite a good relationship and resolved our issue to maximum enjoyment for all concerned. We've been enjoying this area and have been involved in the school board probably ever since that issue six years ago. We have attended most of the meetings. We've also enjoyed meeting with the Town Council of Smyrna as we have grown to appreciate the great work that goes on in public service. We see this as an opportunity to participate and to give back to our community by sharing my professional experience and our desire for continued volunteerism. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate, also from Zone 4, is Katie Darby.
Good evening. First, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum. I would also like to thank those in attendance here and watching at home for your interest and support. My name is Katie Darby. I have lived in Rutherford County for 16 years. I am married to my husband Jay Darby for 15 years, and we have three amazing children, all attending school within the Rutherford County school system. My oldest is beginning his seventh year in the school system, and my youngest just beginning entering kindergarten. I'm a former substitute teacher. I've taught preschoolers for several years and currently own my own business. I decided to run for the school board when an incident regarding my son's safety left me feeling unheard and discarded. I felt there was no one willing to truly listen and take steps to improve the safety following this incident. I have since heard from many other parents who were also left feeling unheard and helpless regarding all kinds of issues: allergies, bullying, 504 plans, etc. This is why I'm running for the school board, to be a voice for every parent and child. Education is about the children, and every child should feel safe in their school environment. There should be open communication between parents, teachers, schools, and the school board. I am a product of the public school system and a firm believer in it. I believe education should have a strong academic foundation rounded out with opportunities for enrichment and fun. Benjamin Franklin said, "Tell me and I forget; teach me and I remember; involve me and I learn." I have a desire and passion to make our school district the best it can possibly be. I have the time and dedication this position requires to make a difference, and I would be honored if you would give me the opportunity to prove that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is also from Zone 4 and is Tiffany Johnson.
Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for holding this forum and for those in attendance this evening. My name is Tiffany Johnson. I am first and foremost a believer in Jesus Christ. I am married to Travis Johnson for nearly 17 years. We have seven beautiful children who have all been and attended Rutherford County schools, three of which are graduated. One is at Mottlo, two are at MTSU, and we have several others, two in high school and two in middle school currently. I'm a graduate of MTSU. I was a non-traditional student. My husband and I started a family. I went back to school to pursue degrees. I received a Bachelor of Arts in History and a Bachelor of Science in Political Science, minored in Psychology. I'm a master's candidate in Public Administration at Tennessee State University, and I'm earning a certificate in nonprofit management there as well. I am currently the Executive Director at the Sam Davis Home here in Smyrna. I am transitioning out of that role as an opportunity to grow. Our family business has presented itself. I am there in a volunteer capacity still and will continue to support the site and preserve the history, the beautiful agricultural history and the history that site has to provide. In my time there at the Sam Davis Home, I've worked on budgets, balanced budgets. We have negotiated contracts, we've written grants, thousands of dollars' worth of grants, worked with our legislators and our city officials and county officials, government officials. We've implemented new accounting practices and really improved operational components there. My desire to serve on the school board comes from my children. We have children on the spectrum, both gifted children and children who struggle. And I would like to be a voice for parents and for teachers as well in the community. I think it's important to advocate for them and to look out for the safety and the growth that's happening here in the county.
Thank you very much. Our final candidate for introductions is Marvin Whitworth, also from Zone 4.
Thank you, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for the opportunity tonight and for all of you who have come and all of you who are listening. My name is Marvin Whitworth, and I am a lifelong resident of Rutherford County, a proud graduate of Rockvale High School. My wife and I have been married for 47 years. We are both retired teachers. Our three daughters are currently certified to teach. Two of them teach in Rutherford County. Our seven grandchildren are also in, well, four of them in Rutherford County. The other daughter lives in Knoxville. But we have been in education, and I feel that my educational background is something that would be beneficial here on the board. Education is a complex system, and there's nothing like the feeling of going in the classroom with 25 unexcited youngsters and being able to shut the door behind you and have those children with you for those few minutes. But we have a lot of problems going on in our society. They all come together in the school system. One of the big challenges is Rutherford County's growth. One of the big challenges is school safety. Another large challenge is obtaining and retaining qualified educators. So as the board, we have an opportunity to affect all of these things, and I look forward to the challenge of being able to serve the community and people of Rutherford County as we address these challenges and as we work to provide the best quality education that we can for our children here in Rutherford County. Thank you.
Thank you for those introductions. We will now turn to our first question. Remember, you will have one minute to answer this question. This question will be answered first by Mr. Dow Smith. Here's the question, and it's the same question for all the candidates. Question number one, what do you consider to be the main responsibility of a school
I consider the main responsibility of a school board member as being a steward of our system. It's a seven-member body that is in charge of creating policy. It's a board that's going to create and oversee a $390 million budget. It's going to be a body that makes sure teachers are hired appropriately and makes sure they have the tools and systems that they need to do their job. It's a board that's got to make sure that safety is the first priority. So those are the main responsibilities that your board will serve.
Next, Mr. Beldon. What do you consider to be the main responsibility of school board members?
I feel that the main responsibility of a school board member is to administer the resources and policies that are in place for the system. That is, to manage the budget, to see that the policies are current and pertinent to the day and time, and to manage the school system as a whole. That is, the administration, the people that are involved. Looking out for the students is a top priority of the board, and I do believe that by providing a safe and resource-laden environment, we can achieve the greater potential of each of these students.
Thank you. Next is Katie Darby. What do you consider to be the main responsibility of a school board member?
I think the main responsibility of a school board member is probably assuring that the education needs of the children within our school system are being met properly. And I think that falls beyond just administering policies. We also need to evaluate those policies. There are things that we need to come together collectively to take a look at, evaluating textbooks, evaluating policies, so that we can make sure all of those things are coming together in the right way and making sure that our students are being taken care of. I would say under that also falls the opportunity for growth that we're facing. We need to make sure that we are diligently making sure the funds are being spent correctly, those schools are being built the way we need them to.
Thank you. Tiffany Johnson, what do you consider to be the main responsibility of a school board member? Speak into the mic.
Is to work with the Director of Schools to ensure that every student in Rutherford County is receiving a solid education, to ensure that they're safe, they're our future. And our responsibility is to, as a board member, would be to be the bridge between the information at the board level, at the district level, to the parents and the community, and to ensure that every child is afforded the same opportunity at learning and that we can continue to advance our community and keep it great as it is.
Marvin Whitworth, what do you think is the main responsibility of a school board member?
School board as a whole is the management group that is overseeing the education system of our county. And as I said in my opening remarks, that includes making sure every child has a good, safe place to learn. We need to be sure as much as we can with the resources that we have, considering the finances of the county, that we are not teaching tomorrow's workplace with yesterday's technology and that they are afforded the opportunities to do that in a safe environment. Now, that, of course, encompasses a lot of things when we talk about safety, and that is from the time they get on the bus at 6 o'clock in the morning till they get off at 4:30 in the afternoon. It's not just inside the school building, and we need to all be aware of that. And the school board's responsibility is to administer all of these things in the most economically feasible possible way. Thank you.
Tammy Sharp, what do you think is the most important responsibility of the school board member?
I think our most important responsibility is to be a conduit between our constituents, whether that be a taxpayer, or it be a teacher, or it be a student, or an administrator.
Thank you. All right, we will move on now to the second question. Again, you will have one minute to respond, and this time, we will start with Mike Beldon. All right, the second question is this. If elected, how do you plan to stay in touch with your constituents?
I would plan to stay in touch with my constituents by making myself available, whether that be through social media, whether that be through emails, whether it be through personal phone calls. I believe that it's important that each of the parents needs to be informed. I believe it's important for the community to be informed, and I do believe it's also important to work closely with the county commission in order to be united and unified in the objectives of the school system. Making myself available is about the only way to do it other than going around and knocking on doors, and that becomes time prohibitive.
Katie Darby, if elected, how do you plan to stay in touch with your constituents?
I would plan on staying in touch by making my phone number, email address, available. I also believe it's important that there are going to be times people are going to require or feel it necessary to have an in-person meeting. I think sometimes, meeting over a good cup of coffee with a concerned parent goes a long way. Being that I own my own business and I work out of my home, it's easy for me to dedicate that time to those people that would require that. So I'm open and available to all communication.
Thank you. Tiffany Johnson, if elected, how do you plan to stay in touch with your constituents?
I think there's various avenues that we can use. Currently, social media is a platform for a lot of young families. There's different applications that you can find to communicate with parents and set up reminder apps and such like that. I think just being available by phone in the community, I'm a member of Smyrna Rotary, I'm an active member in the Chamber, and in my kids' school and all their sporting activities. I'm an open door, and I am in my current capacity, and I would plan to be as a board member as well.
Thank you. Marvin Whitworth, if elected, how do you plan to stay in touch with your constituents?
As I learned after I had filed my papers, my phone number is public record. So that obviously is a way that it can be done. But I plan on attending every, going to every school that's in my zone, talking to the principal and the vice principals there, staying in contact with the bus drivers, the custodial workers, the school cafeteria people, and all those people who have contact and are part of the educational process of our child. And when we hear the statement that it takes a village to educate a child, the school system is a village, from the bus driver to the custodian, to the teachers, the administration, and so forth. In addition to seeing them, I told everyone that has allowed me to say that I will talk to anybody and everybody, as long as you do not get belligerent, as long as you're not cursing, and as long as you're not slandering someone, I'll talk to you.
Tammy Sharp, if elected, how do you plan to stay in touch with your constituents?
Well, it is true that our phone number is a person, a public record, but I also have another phone number that I have put on my palm cards. And my campaign team and I, between Sunday and Monday of this week, we knocked 600 doors. On those palm cards, they have my phone number, my email address, I have a special email address already, and my Facebook page. So I'm already in touch with at least 600 constituents.
Thank you. Dow Smith, if elected, how do you plan to stay in touch with your constituents?
Obviously, the basics. You can reach me, phone number, email. I'm going to be available, but I'll continue to do what I have been doing. I'm going to be a donut man at FCA meetings. I'm going to be on games on Friday night, being the endzone camera coach. I'm going to be contacting community people out there raising money for our quarterback club. I'm going to be supporting local PTOs. I'm going to be visiting schools. I love them and I care for them. I will be in touch.
Thank you. Now, I think that was everyone. Now, we will move on to question three, and with this question, we will start with Katie Darby. This is the question. What do you think is the most important issue facing Rutherford County schools in the next five years, and how would you address that issue?
I think the most important issue facing Rutherford County schools now and within the next five years is definitely growth. I think that there needs to be a lot of thought going into those schools and how they're going to grow, as well as how those funds are going to be appropriated to maintain our current schools as well. And I think it's going to be a very collective effort.
Okay, thank you. Tiffany Johnson, what do you think is the most important issue facing Rutherford County schools in the next five years, and how would you address it?
I would agree that growth is a major issue, but a secondary issue of that would be safety. With growth comes natural safety issues. I would work with the Director of Schools on his plan to ensure that his plan is keeping safety in mind for students, to be a steward of the funds that the district has and is given, to run the district and the school system. And I think we need to do something with the SRO program and work with the Sheriff's Department to ensure that our children are kept safe as we grow and add more schools.
Marvin Whitworth, what do you think is the most important issue facing Rutherford County schools in the next five years, and how would you address that issue?
Records show that we are gaining 1,200 to 1,300 students per year, which equates to approximately one new school every year. And if you look at history, we've probably built nine schools in the last 10 years. Safety is becoming a tremendously important factor. Retaining, as I said, good quality educators is of utmost importance, and it costs the county somewhere between $75,000 and $100,000 for every teacher we hire, which is for about every 25 or 30 students. So that all being said, the number-one factor facing our county for the next 10 years and 100 years even for that is funding. All of these things are going to cost us. When we have hundreds of houses, thousands of houses being built in our communities, about every thousand houses is going to be a new school. So we've got to pay for all this. So all the things that we talk about, it all comes back down to how much money. I do not believe you solve problems by throwing money at it, and I got to quit.
Tammy Sharp, what do you think is the most important issue facing Rutherford County schools in the next five years, and how would you address that issue?
Well, I know growth, as everyone has said, is an issue. Today, I spoke with Senator Ketrin, and he was meeting with Director, our new Director, Spurlock, today to think of some things that are out of the box. And I definitely think we need to put forth a collaborative effort with our county commissioners, with our schoolteachers, with the board and the director, and maybe just some other people who do buildings, and see if we can't do some multi-use for some of our buildings because we have explosive growth, and I think we're on point to build about three new schools in the next five years. So growth is definitely an issue.
Dow Smith, what do you think is the most important issue facing Rutherford County schools in the next five years, and how would you address that issue?
The biggest issue we have facing is, yes, growth, and also with that, safety. More students are coming, 1,000, 1,200 a year. With that, we've got to hire more teachers. We've got to hire more systems, people to support those teachers, also the construction growth. Those are issues that we're having to deal with today and for sure, we'll have to deal with for the next five years. My approach to that would be simply as I approach it in my business. Economics is a key part of that. Live within an economic reality and be a good steward of our taxpayer dollars.
Mike Beldon, what do you think is the most important issue facing Rutherford County schools in the next five years, and how would you address that issue?
Well, this doesn't sound like a broken record, but it is growth. We've attended several town council meetings and just looked at all the housing developments that are being approved throughout the county, and it is just amazing how many homes are being built. Growth, yes. What brings with it the issues of staffing, and that brings with it the issues of competition. We're going to have to compete with neighboring communities, neighboring school systems to attract and retain qualified staff to administer the efforts that we're trying to attract and retain qualified staff to administer the efforts that we're trying to accomplish here. Funding is going to be a huge issue because right now we are spending about $1,000 per student less than the state average. I don't know how we can keep up with that and meet the needs of our students. So that means close correlation with our county commission and the state.
That brings us to question four. The first person to answer question four will be Tiffany Johnson. Here's question four. What specific measures would you propose to increase security at Rutherford County schools?
I don't know much about what the current security programs are or practices are outside of the SRO program. I know that some of our schools are older, Riverdale and Oakland particularly, they aren't fenced, they're not secured quite like Stewart's Creek or Blackman is. I think that maybe potentially putting up some fencing, my children attend Riverdale, I could freely drive onto that campus every day, any time of day. That's a safety concern for me. Portables, eliminating the portables is a huge concern. My son was in fifth grade last year, he was in a portable, short story, he went missing, and they couldn't allocate where he was, they couldn't tell me. Those are some things we need to address, eliminating the portables and potentially putting up fencing. But I'm open to conversations with the Sheriff's Department to ensure that we make the right decisions for our students.
Marvin Whitworth, what specific measures would you propose to increase security at Rutherford County schools?
Security is one of the greatest things that we have to look forward to. The SRO program is a very comfortable thing, and I know as a teacher, it was a great comfort to have the SRO program. It would be great to expand that. That comes under the Department of the Sheriff and not the school board. But it's everybody's responsibility to be safe at school. And parents need to monitor their children, know what they're doing. Children need to monitor each other. And it's it's one of those things, and one of the big things that I have noticed, and we need more security on school buses. Cameras are after the fact. And so we need a security person on the bus in order to keep that bus driver safe, the children safe. All he needs to do or she needs to do is be sure that bus gets down the road and does not have to worry about the children that are behind him.
Thank you. Tammy Sharp, what specific measures would you propose to increase security at Rutherford County schools?
Well, I'm grateful that Rutherford County was one of the first SRO programs in the country, and I think we've led across the country with that design. I would like to see our schools hardened in some aspects. I do, however, have a concern about our schools looking like a federal prison with maybe fencing or more guards. So it may be some more things behind the scenes or some things that are confidential that probably wouldn't be open to the public that you wouldn't want to discuss in a public forum.
Dow Smith, what specific measures would you propose to increase security at Rutherford County schools?
Three ideas I would bring to the table for conversation. First, expand the SRO program. We've got a great SRO program. I think we should have one officer for every 500 students. So that would look like we'd have four or five students at high schools, three at middle schools, and at least one at every elementary school. So expand the SRO program. Like to study a plan or a system where make sure our safety program from the hallways out to the parking lot, identify dangers that are happening out in the parking lot. And then the last would be maybe a plan or a strategy where where the student who's socially out on the fringe, if there's a way, we can make sure every student has a place where they belong and they matter.
Thank you. Mike Belden, what specific measures would you propose to increase security at Rutherford County schools?
We're already incorporating many facility improvements with the new schools, but it doesn't help with the old schools. Some of the suggestions that I've heard tonight I echo, including hardening the schools. But we don't want to make the place an armed camp. We don't want the kids to feel more stressed and under pressure for their safety. So somehow we need to make that almost an invisible network. We can, with the evolution of technology, we have many means of incorporating safe access, safe entrance and egress to our school buildings. And I believe that alone could solve a lot of problems.
Katie Darby, what specific measures would you propose to increase security at Rutherford County schools?
I would say if you're talking specifically about increasing security at the schools, I would echo Ms. Sharp's sentiments that some of it is probably not a discussion for a public forum. I know I have seen some information about some safety tents that can be installed in classrooms, which are an option, increasing the SRO program is an option. And I think it probably would not be a poor idea for to put together some kind of a specialty group to discuss those things and evaluate them and look at studies and see what the most appropriate action would be.
We're making good time tonight, so I'm going to ask a fifth question before we get to our final one. So this is another one-minute question. And this is, we are going to start with Marvin Whitworth this time. All right. So this is the question. What changes would improve county schools, and how could those changes be implemented?
To me, the changes that would help us the most are those changes that help our students be prepared for workplace. I was extremely excited later on in the school year when I saw that 17 of our students, I believe from Siegel and Stewart's Creek, were given their nurse tech certificates, which means they are employable, and they have a skill. And we need to prepare our students to go out to the workplace. Everyone is not going to college. Everyone does not need to go to college. And so because of that, we need to have an educational system in place that prepares every child to go into the workplace, to be a positive influence in his or her community, able to earn a job to, I mean, have a job to earn for their family and provide for the community in which we live.
Amy Sharp, what changes would improve county schools, and how would those changes be implemented?
I don't know about changes, but I really like our dual enrollment program. It allows the student to stay home, to stay in school, and also gather college credits at the same time. And it's it's more cost-effective, and it allows them to stay home and mature versus leaving and going to college. And so and they also don't have the student loan debt. I would like to see some more emphasis put on that program so more children can take advantage of it.
Dow Smith, what changes would improve county schools, and how could those changes be implemented?
I would want to speak words of affirmation. The workplace development programs and what the chamber's doing is is very good stuff, being being relevant, really, is what I would say. The dual enrollment program was great for my boys, and so, so again, keeps it fresh. Curriculum and a change in curriculum, just to stay relevant and keep things fresh, would be the changes I'd like to see.
Mike Belden, what changes would improve county schools, and how could those changes be implemented?
Well, I'm looking forward to my retirement. That being said, I'm looking forward to continuity of my social security benefits. That means giving our students every opportunity to become productive, self-sustaining members of society and of our community. Make them, give them every opportunity to have good income and to to provide for their families and to contribute to the community. How to do that? I believe we've already got a great start with the CTE programs in the school. They are working wonders. And I can see us expanding that to an even greater level so that when those kids march across the stage with their diplomas in hand, they're ready to go to work.
Darby, what changes would improve county schools, and how could those changes be implemented?
I think Rutherford County school systems actually have a pretty great base so far, at least that's been my experience for the most part. I would say the changes that could improve them would definitely be communication. I think that that's on all levels. I think we have a lot of parents within the system frustrated with not being heard. I think some students are frustrated with feeling like they're not being heard. I think that we could definitely bring in some programs to build these kids up, make them feel empowered, have them excited to come to school, have them excited to participate in the dual enrollment programs and things of that nature so that coming to school is an exciting day for them.
Thank you. Tiffany Johnson, what changes could improve county schools, and how could those changes be implemented?
I personally believe Rutherford County schools are already exceptional. I think that there are some areas that we can continue to improve. I echo Dow in that what the chamber has done, the Megatronics program at Oakland, that has provided students an opportunity that's unprecedented. If we can continue to implement those kind of projects and and programs for students, the nursing programs, we give children and students an opportunity to have, earn a living when they they get out of school. So I think that also creating a relationship between the teachers and the parents, it is, it takes a village. And teachers shouldn't be burdened with the responsibility alone. We, as parents and community, should support them. So I think that building those relationships would be very beneficial.
Thank you. Now we've come to the last question. We'll go back to where we began. Down here with Ms. Sharp, you will have two minutes to answer the question and to make your closing remarks. Here's the question. What makes you the candidate to vote for? Ms. Sharp?
What makes me the candidate to vote for is I've been preparing for this role for at least about six years. I became involved in the textbook advocates group, where we go to the repository at MTSU and we review all the books that are in the classrooms in the state of Tennessee are either up for adoption. I've been attending the school board meetings, often on since at least 2012, but when I decided to run for the school board meeting, I've been to at least one school board every week when we've had multiple meetings for budgets and selecting the director. I also have been meeting with special ed teachers to get more information because I believe that's one area that's in our schools that there is not an advocate for, and it's a growing area. I also went to attended the Tennessee Department of Education regional meeting that they held in Tennessee here in Nashville for an update on the Every Student Succeeds Act, or as everybody knows, ESSA. So I have been preparing for this role for almost six years. So I feel that I'm prepared.
Thank you. Dow Smith, what makes you the candidate to vote for?
Thank you, Dr. Pruitt. I'll start with the reasons why I'm running. I'm running because I'm a grateful parent, I fully participated in public education myself and my kids fully participated in it. I'm a business owner that recognizes that the survival of my company, and I believe the survival of all businesses in Rutherford County is tied directly to the strength of our public education. Those are the reasons why I'm running. I know what it takes to come up with a budget, to live within a budget, being a business guy, understand economic reality and balancing spending a dollar versus getting a return on investment of that. I live that in every day. The biggest challenges for us, we mentioned here, is is keeping up with growth. With that, we're going to have to hire more teachers. We're going to have to make sure we've got the support staff and the resources for these teachers. We're going to have to build more schools. These three areas, areas I deal with every day, in hiring and making sure we have people and systems in place to support the people that we've hired. I'm in the construction industry, and I just know what it takes to build a building and make sure it's a building that that works and will meet our program needs.
Mike Belden, what makes you the candidate to vote for?
Like Mr. Smith, I too have a construction background, and I have a great appreciation and understanding of what it takes to put facilities in place and to manage those facilities. My experience in those roles, I've had to deal with budgets, I've had to deal with human resources, and I've been very successful in that. My experience doesn't necessarily come from a school system, but I believe that my business experience, my professional experience, has a lot to offer to move this excellent school system forward. We have a great record already. I can see the momentum going forward, being successful in bringing more students up and into the community. I also believe that the experience that I've had in the last several years in interacting with the school board members and various administrators has given me an appreciation and understanding of the roles already. I feel I could step right into that role immediately.
Katie Darby, what makes you the candidate to vote for?
I would say I'm the candidate to vote for because I am, I've been in it. I'm a former substitute teacher, I have three children within the county school system, and I understand the struggles from that side. I'm also a business owner. I've been an admin assistant, so I've also worked with budgets and human resource type issues and things of that nature. And I would just like to say again, thank you to everyone involved in this forum this evening. I appreciate the opportunity it's provided myself and all the other candidates. And I may not have as much experience as some of the others, but you won't find someone more passionate and dedicated about these children within our school system. I'm available to listen, and I'm invested in making our school system the best it can be. I will work hard for our community to make sure that the educational needs are being met and that all voices are being heard. I'm someone who simply wants the best for the children in our community, their education, and the Rutherford County school system, and I would really appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany Johnson, what makes you the candidate to vote for?
I am a listener and I'm a learner, and I think in order to address issues and in order to lead, you have to first listen. You have to understand the issues, the problems, you have to communicate with people, you have to build relationships. I'm passionate, my children are everything to me. Their friends are everything to me, and I think that they're our future. So there's a lot that we can address, and there's a lot we can handle and take care of. I don't know the answers, but I'm willing to find them, and I'm willing to work with the appropriate people, the county commission. I spent some time at the legislature here in Tennessee as an assistant. I've built relationships with lawmakers. I think that there are some answers once you start having conversations. And our children are very important, it's 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 the largest part of our county budget is our school is our school budget. I mean, that's important. The growth is exponential. We do save a lot of money, and we are an excellent school system, but there is room for improvement, and I'd like an opportunity to participate in that.
And Marvin Whitworth, what makes you the candidate to vote for?
You know, I really wish I knew the answer to that question, but I'm a lifelong educator. My family is very involved in education. Out of out of college, I spent eight years or so in agricultural credit. I've taught for 25 years. I've been running a small business slash farm since I was 19 by myself. And in all of those places, sometimes you have to make really hard decisions. And everybody cannot be given a yes. And sometimes you have to make decisions that are not really popular, are not really fun. But I have made those decisions, and I will continue to make those decisions. I am a fiscal conservative. I am a conservative person. I am not affiliated with any political party. I am me. I'm an independent thinker, but I do think that I play well with others. I've served on a number of boards by which you have to work and come to an agreement, and we've always been able to do that. But I think in all the things that we've done, that I have prepared myself for this moment in time, that I can serve the people of Rutherford County, whether it be the taxpayers who do not have children that are in the public schools at this point, or whether the parents of their children as they deal with all the things that have to be dealt with, with teenagers and younger, and with all the teachers and bus drivers and all the school personnel that are looking to us for the answers, I think I have the experience that would give us the, would look through- I think I have the experience that would give us the, would look through the budget, find all the places that we can save money, and still produce the best product that we can for our county. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the conclusion of our questions. Once again, on behalf of the League of Women Voters and the people of Rutherford County, I want to thank all of the candidates for participating. I also want to recognize Brian Robertson, Director of the Rutherford County Office of Information Technology, and Lee Harris, Communications Director, and their staff for their cooperation in presenting this program on Government Channel 19 and making it available on the county website. I want to encourage all Rutherford County citizens to vote. Early voting begins July 13th and goes through July 28th. Election Day is August the 2nd. Please exercise this important right to determine who will serve on the Rutherford County School Board. Remember that your vote counts. Let's close with a round of applause for all of our candidates.